Call to Order that CUSD 201 School Board Meeting, September 27, 2022. Roll call please.
Leah Conover?
Here.
Kevin Marin?
Here.
Laura Coyle?
Here.
Jessica Redonia?
Here.
Carlos Avia?
Here.
Angela Steckety?
Here.
Adina Hoover?
Here.
Can we please stand for the Fledgling Judges?
The Fledgling Judges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to enter a closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, collective bargaining, and to review closed session minutes.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay, we're returning from closed session. As a reminder, we do have set a public hearing at 7:00 PM. If we do come to that before that time, we'll continue beyond that on the agenda and then return back to adhere to that public hearing session. So at this time, we'll continue with approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 13th, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the September 13th, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will proceed to public comment. Do we have any? Okay. Okay, we don't have any public comment at this time. Again, we will return to the public hearing at 7:00. So we will move to the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. One, personnel recommendations. Kim Corso, daily, student services secretary. Robert Slowick, wrestling volunteer, WJHS. Two, approval of the September 2022 expenditure report. Three, ratification of August 2022 regular payroll. And four, approval of student tour, WHS.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Duckerty?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
And we'll move along to the information discussion with an ASB update. We have a handout.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening. Nice to be back with you. Hope everything's going well with you and for your school year so far. I think that you were provided this yesterday electronically, so I just want to hit some highlights and then answer any questions and let you know where we are in the process, kind of where we are and where we're going. So first of all, you see on the front page that there were a total of 85 individuals who participated in the six focus groups and 41 were staff members. 35 were parents and community and nine were in the administrative group.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I ask, how does this compare to other communities when you've had these?
Um, I would say very, very comparable. Probably more parents and community than we often get.
Good.
And again, I, I think you have done an exceptional job with getting the word out and the large banners that I saw at different places around town.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, please jump in at any time. I just wanted to say a couple of things about the groups before we started and one is that everyone, all six of them, the participants were very, very engaged, very thoughtful and reflective and very appreciative for the opportunity that the board gave them. And I, I think with all of them, I made a note to say, thank a board member, if you see one for this opportunity. It's not a piece that's standard, but it was very important to the board that they hear a lot for as much as possible from stakeholders and they appreciated that. Thank you also Shannon and Kevin. You were there to greet me, make sure I knew where I was going and what was happening at all six of the groups and that's a little unusual too. I don't, I usually am floundering around trying to find where's the gym or the cafeteria and you beat me there to all of them. So thank you so much for, I know that was additional, one additional thing in your day. If you turn to what would be the second page, so really we just anchor the conversation around four questions and those are spring boards. And the first one is what is unique? We asked the individuals to take a moment. So with all four of these questions, the participants took some quiet moments to answer just themselves what they thought. And then with larger groups, they talked and buzzed at their table and then kind of reported out themes. And with smaller groups, we didn't do a buzz at the table, we just talked. But I collected all of the forms and tallied and coded all of the answers because if there were a group like this and maybe four or five people. there were a group like this and maybe four or five people really wanted to offer and had a lot to share and a lot to say, and maybe there were other individuals who had similar or different ideas, but they didn't speak up, I wanted everything coded and counted. So I collected everything from them. And it was really interesting and great, I would say, that there were so many themes and answers and topics that went across all three groups. And so after the, you know, the second one and then the third one and then the fourth one, I just started really hearing reoccurring themes. So with the first one, what is unique? There were four answers that really cut across or went across all three groups. And the first one was the size and the makeup of your district, that it's small, that it's unit, but also more than that, sort of the advantages to that. We, we know children pre-K through 12. The articulation across the buildings, kind of the advantages to that. Second one was the united family feel. I kept hearing words like close knit, tight knit, feels like a family, feels like a community. That was the second one. The third theme across all of them, I tried to do some color coding and there wasn't enough highlight colors, so then I did some different fonts. Hopefully you can figure out. There was not a system like green doesn't mean anything different. Then red, they were just colors to sort of help you, your eyes move across the columns. The third one was opportunities for students. So lots of talk about things ranging from academic opportunities like AP courses to extracurriculars, but just lots of opportunities for students, richly so, and that students didn't necessarily have to pigeonhole themselves into one track. I can be, I'm a, they said sometimes in larger schools, you have to sort of pick, I'm going to be a band kid or I'm going to be a basketball kid. And that's not necessarily true in a smaller district. Third was name the dual language program, also the diversity of the district, the richness and diversity of the district. I think those were the four that went across all three. There were two other topics that went across two of the groups, and I guess one of them was the opportunities, and the other one was the grade level centers. Any questions on that one before I move on? And I know you're watching your time for the budget here, so just let me know. If we turn to the next page, there's, was kind of some overlap between one and two because one is what's unique about the district, two is what are the points of pride and the strengths of the district. So some things appeared on both lists, but I tried to do my best to put them where the bulk of the answers fell. There were five themes that came up that cut across all three groups. The first one was had to do with staff, and that included teachers, administrators and support staff. Heard lots of caring, invested, will do anything it takes, dedicated, hardworking. And I want to point out something that's not always true when we do these in all districts. And that was in the staff group, people making a point to compliment administration. And in administration, the making a point to compliment the teachers. And so sometimes what you get is teachers saying, we work really, really hard, we are great, which is great for them to say that about themselves. Nothing wrong with that. But it's just sometimes you hear people talk about their own group and not other groups. And so that was just a nice thing for me to mention to you.
Quick question.
Yes.
To clarify, the numbers on the side in parentheses, what is that?
Oh, thank you very much for asking that. That was the number of answers, responses around that theme that were coded. So 26 people out of the 35 parents had something, had some comment or written statement about staff, about a great staff. Thank you. I should have said that at the outset and forgot to, so thank you for asking that question. The second one that appeared in all three groups was essentially pride, which came under lots of talk about awards, honors, achievement. The third one had to do with culture and climate, very positive culture and climate. Couple of groups said it, and that's backed up by data, for example, the Five Essentials survey. Another one was the, oh, parents and community. So very supportive community, very supportive and involved parents. And the fifth one was, leaving my glasses here to read some of these, the bond and articulation and communication between and among schools. You could see in one group, it was called collaboration between schools, and another one, you know, just the wording might be a little different. There were some themes that came up in two groups. One had to do with your students, amazing students, great, hardworking students. And another was trust in the professionals, teacher autonomy, we are not micromanaged. And same thing appeared in the administrator group, trust in and autonomy given to teachers and administrators. If no questions, we'll move on to challenges and issues. And they were asked, what do you think are the challenges or issues the district is facing or will be facing in the next few years that your next superintendent will need to be prepared to lead, handle, or problem solve? And interestingly, there were six topics that came, that appeared in all three groups. The first one being building infrastructure needs. So maintenance, aging buildings, facilities updates, capital projects, remodeling projects, so all under that umbrella. Second one was essentially money, deficit budgets, financial pressure, many needs, how to do more with less, do we need a referendum, budget for current and future needs. Third one was keeping the district strong and advancing it. So heard a lot of, we are really have this positive, great momentum. We want to keep that going and even further advance it. Appears in the middle group has continued to raise the bar, continuous improvement, those kinds of statements. The one, two, three, fourth one that occurred across all three groups had to do with sort of post-COVID, post-COVID learning loss, need to increase scores, learning loss and social, emotional and behavioral needs having to do with post-COVID. And, and see it also there in the third group. The four, excuse me, fifth topic was staffing issues, something we're hearing across the state and across the nation. So everything from making sure we fill retirements with quality people, shortages in all employee groups, shortages, finding bus drivers and custodians and teachers, and so just staffing, making sure that staffing at all levels and in all positions, that we can maintain that and fill them as needed. And the last one was diversity, equity and inclusion, being aware of, supporting those, you know, increasing and ongoing needs and topics under that. There were a couple of things that appeared in two groups, two of the three groups. One had to do with politically charged issues and laws, so navigating, addressing, advising and healing from things like CRT, sex ed standards, book bans. That appeared in two groups. And another one that appeared, appeared in two groups was contract negotiations, union relationships, continue positive conversations with the union, things under that umbrella. Also in two groups was potential growth with possible new residential development. That appeared in the first and third columns. Then if you turn to the fourth page, if you were in charge of employing the next superintendent and you had the final say, what would you be looking for? What characteristics, strengths, traits? And there were eight similarities, eight common themes, which was impressive across all three groups. First one, communication and words like transparent, both written and verbal, forthright, transparent, strong communicator, clear and consistent communicator. Second one is the yellow highlight, things that had to do with kind of the humanity, the approachability of the person, so caring, personable, kind, kind, fair, compassion, welcoming, positive, encouraging, those kinds of things. The third one is the pale gray highlight, so visionary, forward thinking, innovative. And you see that across the other two columns. The fourth one was, and this one was quite a theme, it really sort of showed up in a couple of different ways in more than one group, but I, so I highlighted all of those in that blue color. The ability to elevate the district, so setting expectations and delivering on them. Proven leadership, that their leadership has been demonstrated by results, a record of follow-through and reliability. And again, in the third group, a proven leader. They facilitated proven school improvement results. They have some excellence that has been recognized through some kind of honor or award. Results oriented, goal and data driven. The, the blue, dark blue highlight has to do with experiences. Several people talked about a robust resume. They've really had some diverse experiences, and again, back to the proven results and accomplishments, having to do with knowledgeable because they've worked in different arenas and perhaps at different levels. And there were things about knowledgeable about special education and school ed law, experience with a similar district, wide range of experiences. The next one is honesty, ethics, trustworthy.
We'll just do that.
Do you need to interrupt? Do we need to do the budget?
No, we can continue and finish this and then we'll do.
Okay, good. We're just about done. One about honesty, ethics, honesty and integrity, that's that one kind of dark blue color. The orange about being able to develop different groups. All of the groups said, we want to be mentored, we want to be supported, we want to be, and, and you know, balancing, leading us and leading and knowing when to delegate, giving autonomy, but also really advancing us. Visibility, investment in the community, we want to see him or her, we want to know they're invested and actively involved in the community. Those were the ones that were in all three groups, and you can see with the green, excuse me, not with the green, with kind of the bright red and then the sort of the purply berry color were some that appeared in two of the three groups. But I'm going to, in the interest of time, leave you to analyze those yourself. But I did want to say something else before I open it up to any questions and let you move on to the next part of your agenda. As of this evening, 55 individuals have begun applications. That's a large number, and that's a compliment to you. That is the district's reputation. And so this day and age, it's a little bit higher perhaps than we get in some searches. Now, all may not submit, they have not all submitted yet, some have, but at least, but at this point, we still have a couple of weeks to go, 55 have started apps. Applications close on 10/11, and I bring the slate, and then colleagues and I will do the screening interviews, finalize the slate and bring the slate to you, to your October 25th, I believe, meeting. So with that, I know you have other business tonight, but any questions that I can answer for you at this time?
One quick question. Thanks for putting this together and thanks for all the work. I know there's a lot of work that goes into compiling this and synthesizing it in the way that we're seeing it here.
Absolutely.
So obviously, we, we as a board will use this when it comes time for us to do our interviews. How does this work guide the work that you are doing?
Yes, that's a great question. So the folks who are analyzing the applications, we will use it to supplement what you identified as the ideal traits that you're seeking in the person. So we will talk about, this will drive an influence as we're screening, analyzing some of the questions we may ask in the screening interviews. So it will sharpen our lens as we're reading applications and doing screening interviews, as I'm sure it will for you as well. And then it could be a document that you share with the superintendent once named as part of his or her onboarding. Thank you for that question.
So kind of the survey is like your first place to go for the screening of the applicants, and then this kind of helps you drive into a little bit more detail as you're going through?
This into a little more detail, yes. This drives, this dives a little more deeply into some of the questions that you may be asking, so those are additional questions that we will be asking to find out their level of experience and expertise. Other questions?
Can we, should we make this public into our superintendent's search page or there's nothing?
Yeah. You can. This was shared in open session.
Identifiable, so?
Nothing identifiable, nobody is identified.
Okay.
And it's already on the board docs, correct?
It's on the board docs.
It's in board docs. I'm just thinking of that page, like, so people that are.
Okay, sorry.
It's not, okay. So people that are interested in like where we're at with the superintendent's search, what, we've got our survey results, you know, to date.
Could be very transparent, you know, with the results of the focus groups.
Yep, yep. So that we, people have like a one place to go, because they don't want people digging through, digging through like board docs, trying to search for what date did you have the one thing?
No, just saying if it was public, but it is not public at this time, but if there are no objections to it.
Okay.
We add that to that.
I think it's good.
That website area for the search.
Any other questions? I look forward to seeing you back here then on the 25th. Once applications close, I will send you an email. I can CC others in central office since we've also been communicating with them, but it will say, applications closed today. Here are the number of people who, you know, total applications that were begun, here were the number that were actually submitted, and we are starting our screening process.
I did have, sorry, one more question. On the 25th, which is when you bring the slate to us, and we are doing some training that day, correct? You're gonna, you're gonna help us with some interview training and interview prep and whatnot?
Yes.
Is that in open session or closed session?
Closed.
Closed, okay. Because it has to do with personnel?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct, correct. Because we will, I'll be sharing the names and information about the individuals being brought to you, and there's an expectation of privacy until and unless someone makes it to the final round.
Yeah, you said, at the beginning, you said that I think 55 applications have been started. How many have been completed?
I can check before I leave here and tell you.
Okay.
How many have been submitted.
Okay.
And there are a number of people who don't submit until the night before.
Right.
Because they want to go over with a fine tune phone.
Keep going over.
But I'll tell you, before I leave, I brought my computer and I logged on to the wifi, because I, and I, but I didn't.
Rather than have you stay around and look up that information, typically, is it, is it a large number of people that start the application and don't finish, or?
It.
10%, 20%?
I would, I'm hesitant to give a percentage because it so varies, search to search. And I'm sorry, it's just, it's hard to say. Right now, if I had to guess, I just, I'm going to make an educated guess that 40-some, if, if nobody else, if nobody else started an application and there were 55, I would say in the 40s probably would.
Thanks, that's, that's enough.
Does that help? Okay, ballpark it, yeah.
That's good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So helpful for us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we will return to the public hearing on the 2022, 2023 budget. The Board of Education calls the public hearing to order regarding proposed 2022,
Thank you. So tonight, I'm going to run through the highlights of the fiscal year '22 and '23 budget. For those who do not know, school districts are mandatory approval of the budget by school code. By adopting the budget, we're able to issue, we're able to receive tax dollars and expend those tax dollars on residential and corporate. This budget also serves as a plan for the district administration on spending and revenue, and then also a communication tool for the community, for administration, the district So the next slide is tentative versus adoption. So the, let me see, oh, excuse me, so, so a little budget timeline. So on July 19th, the board heard the tentative hearing and then approved the tentative budget. On July 20th, the board authorized me to post it on the website and also issue it in the newspaper. On September 7th, we held a finance committee meeting that talked about some changes between the tentative and adopted budget, and tonight we'll go through the hearing and approve the proposed budget. Any questions so far? So the tentative versus proposed budget, looking at the revenue side, there was a slight change of $400,000 roughly, tentative versus proposed, mainly in the operation and maintenance fund. So between the tentative and proposed budget, the district received more accurate numbers on corporate personal property tax amounts, and we issued, or we're allocating $400,000 to the operation and maintenance fund of that CPPRT funds, which is projected around $800,000. So we're allocating $400,000 to the operation and maintenance fund, which is driving the significant increase from tentative versus proposed. which is driving the significant increase from tentative versus proposed. Other than that, it's just updating on state aid, getting more accurate numbers on grants, student fees that were collected. So besides the operation and maintenance fund, there were just slight changes on the revenue side. Any questions? On the expenditure side, we saw a difference of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, tentative versus proposed. In large part was the salary increases, getting, you know, and updated on WTA increases, Wesba increases that were approved in addition to contracts that were signed, such as the TA contract that the board approved for estimated four hundred thousand dollars. That was not in the tentative budget. I added it to the proposed budget tonight. So there were changes on the purchase services side. Other objects and salary benefits drove the large change between tentative and adopted budget. Any questions? So just an overview of the highlights. Again, revenue, we got more accurate numbers for CPPRT revenue from the county. We also got updated on state and federal funding that the district will be receiving. And we, the district, is changing investment strategies going forward with solid, significant increase in interest revenue generated to the district. The district is projecting and budgeting on the conservative side of the revenue. For example, the district usually gets ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of property tax collections. And with the recession in the, in the talks and financial struggles, we're projecting a ninety-six to ninety-seven percent collection rate for property taxes. So we're being very conservative on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, increase in personnel that has been discussed in previous board meetings. And going forward, the TA contract services was a big budget line item. The athletic bus, the school, the high school is looking at. A bid opening was held last week. That purchase or that lease discussion was not budgeted in the tentative, so I added that to the proposed budget. Again, those are kind of the overview of highlights on the expenditure side. We are overestimating on the, on the expenditures, underestimating on the revenue side. Any questions? So the next side, next slide is looking at expenditures, or excuse me, revenues by fund, excluding the self-insurance and Fund twenty-two, or sixty-one, twenty-two bonds. So for those who don't know, district is self-funded. But we have an internal Fund twelve, which looks at the revenue expenditures for the medical and dental benefits. So that's excluding Fund twelve and then also two thousand twenty-two bonds, which is Fund sixty-one. Any questions? And then the next slide is looking at fiscal year twenty-three expenditures by fund, excluding self-insurance and bonds. The district is spending eighty percent in the education fund, which is mostly salary benefits, was the biggest expense the district has. Any questions?
So is this, are these proportions typical for other school districts?
Yeah, so a majority of districts, at least in our area, the biggest source of revenue is property taxes and local revenue. On the expenditure side, it is salary and benefits.
Thank you.
And then I wanted to isolate Fund sixty-one in regards to the budget. So this is strictly looking at the twenty-two bonds, expenditures and revenue. The district received five point seven million dollars in July, which will be budgeted in this fiscal year. And we are projecting about five million dollars of capital projects for this HVAC junior high project in this fiscal year. The remaining of the six point nine expenditures will be paid out in fiscal year twenty-four.
Because that's when it's going to finish?
Correct.
Yeah.
So the, so most, they're actually starting work or projecting starting work in October. So October through June, roughly four point nine million dollars of that project will be spent and paid out. And the remaining of the six point nine will be spent out in July and August.
Okay, because they're going to do whatever prep work they possibly can over winter break, spring break, Thanksgiving break?
Correct.
Whatever they can, yeah.
Correct, correct. And as the months progress, we're, we'll be publishing, publishing the drawdown schedule which looks at projected projects, timelines, equipment, such forth, which will look, which will show the four point nine million dollars. Any questions? And looking at the entire budget as a whole, including the self-insurance fund of twelve and twenty-two bonds, Fund sixty-one, there is a deficit of one point seven million dollars. And when we exclude those two funds and look at the general operating funds, we're looking at a two million dollar deficit. And the tentative budget was approved in July, showing a two million dollar deficit. It was just a forty thousand dollar difference between that. So no significant changes from tentative to proposed budget. So that was the budget presentation, shared in board docs and will be published tomorrow on the website, will be the budget book that goes into detail on the district in regards to staffing, enrollment. It will show graphs similar to this. In addition to department budgets, looking at account numbers, budget amounts and historical figures, just being transparent. And that will be posted on the website tomorrow upon approval.
So Anthony, now that you've done this for us for the first time, first of all, thank you. Well done, very clear. Can you speak a little bit to us about your perceptions of the two million dollar deficit in terms of how to approach that moving forward most effectively? What you see maybe as the most significant causes of that? And also, is that typical relative to other school districts? Or are we unique in having that big of a deficit? Yeah, can you just talk a little bit more about that from your area of expertise?
Yeah, so, so the budget is projecting conservative on the revenue side. So, you know, in the areas surrounding Westmont, majority of the revenue source comes from property taxes, residential. So we don't get enough revenue from corporations, majority is residential. So that's the norm around this area. And on the expenditure side, to watch for in regards to this two million dollars, a large part is staffing. You know, with CPI increases, which with negotiations coming up, the district and the Board of Education would have to be conscious of salary benefits, which derives the majority of the expenditures. And every district around the area who are going through negotiations are in this, you know, troubling time, having CPI above five percent. So it's, it is a struggle and most districts in the area are facing that just because of CPI and prices on the expenditures are increasing. To, to fix this deficit is just working with the department heads on seeing what are the needs, what are the wants on the expenditure side in relation to supplies of material, purchase services, and then large part negotiations with salary benefits.
Can you speak?
The fiscal year twenty-two unaudited numbers, which will be finalized in October and November, do show a surplus. Again, those are unaudited numbers as of June thirtieth. So once the audit is approved and presented, more accurate numbers of fiscal year twenty-two will be produced.
That was part of my question, was that, as you stated, the revenue, I believe, or the, yeah, the revenues were conservative. So is there, can you speak to like the buffer? Or I guess, in your experience, that, that buffer that you'll hear from, you know, from different people or different side? Well, that's conservative, like what, in your, I guess in your experience, if, how that, that buffer pays into it? Or is there a percentage you can go by? I know it's hard, we have CPI, we have all these, as we see, like watching TV, just the stocks by themselves. But is it, is there any way you can speak to that?
Yeah, so on the revenue side, it's always best to be conservative. You know, on the expenditure side, we can, majority of it, we can predict on the expenditure side. We have the salary benefit piece on annual increases. We have benefit approval process on the percent increases. We have contracts that we sign. So the expenditure side is a little bit more accurate. We do have contingencies in place for hires down the road or, you know, a little bit of construction work if the roof caves in. So we have contingencies based on that. On the revenue side, it is tough to predict on what percentage pays property taxes. How much revenue can the federal and state produce and give to the district? So, you know, it's always best practice to be conservative. I do know that the district does receive a high percentage of revenue and, you know, receipts from property taxes, ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent. But just with the climate and recession and the finances around the country, it is smart to project a decrease.
You can speak here.
Yes, and then on the contrary, looking at investment strategies was kind of a different way to improve the revenue. The district has always looked at three-month investments on investing in three months, mature, go off to another three months. And looking at rates, six months to twelve months rates are a lot better right now than three months. So we do see a projected increase in interest on investments, but that's a small part of the revenue. So again, it's always being conservative. There is no buffer. I would much rather have a buffer on expenditures to weather, you know, worst-case scenario than project a, you know, a buffer for revenues.
Thank you.
A question, questionee statementy. So do you know, and I understand you may not know this, do you know what percentage we budgeted for of receiving for the tax, for property tax, for twenty-one, twenty-two versus what we actually received?
Yeah, so we, I believe, we definitely receive over a hundred percent of budgeted.
Okay.
I can run those numbers on what was projected received, but we received over a hundred percent.
Okay.
And that's historically what has been done. It's always been conservative on the revenue side of property taxes. And we've already received, you know, always received over a hundred percent of budgeted.
Okay, and, and really like my piece of it going towards that, if we tweak down, you know, the revenue down to like a ninety-six percent, right? What is that, two percent? But, or in previous years, do we typically start at ninety-six percent and end at ninety-eight percent? And I know that you may not know that right off, like just off the top of your head. And then just the other, the other piece is, uh, sorry, that two percent tweak down. And I know that we're coming in at a surplus potentially for this year, but there's also a lot of USR funds and a whole lot of stuff that's throwing that way off. So if we receive like ninety-eight percent of our tax revenue, based on my maths, at like a million dollars more?
Roughly a little, yes.
Off of like a thirty, because we get in thirty, seven million?
Eight hundred, eight hundred thousand to a million dollars, correct.
Okay, so it still doesn't, still doesn't sell for a two million dollar deficit?
Correct.
But it might get us half of the way there, but we have to get that.
Correct, but that goes back to my point of contingencies on the expenditure side. That's estimating, you know, a four hundred thousand dollar TA contract that the board just signed. That is projecting, you know, you know, hires that the district may need this year. That is projecting, you know, a cost of a transportation bus, you know, it may be coming in less. So we're overestimating on the expenditure side just to be safe. I can't tell you, you know, the dis, the budget is a blueprint. It is a projected in the fiscal year. I can't tell you where we will be come June thirtieth of two thousand twenty, twenty-three. But what I can tell you is that, you know, we're doing the best practice that we've always been done as being revenue conservative and overestimate on the expenditures.
Cool, so last thing, just thank you. I know this was a boatload of work and especially it's your first year putting this together. I know that you worked a ton with the buildings and really understanding all the pieces going on. And we're coming in with a seven million dollar project on your first year. You've been really great and super understanding with us, very, in, in our layman terms and in the finance committee, which again, public, welcome to attend, our meetings, but really helpful in kind of teaching us things and helping us to understand this in, in a lot of different ways. So I appreciate the work, I appreciate the work of the office and, you know, all the administrators that it all takes to put this together. So thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate that, and I think the next, so the next steps will be approving the budget tonight. I will be submitting it to the county and the state tomorrow, once approved. All the documents such as the presentation, the budget book, the approved budget form will be posted on the website. And then we use Five Cast for projections. These budget amounts will be uploaded to Five Cast. So come January, when we do projections, projections will show audited fiscal year twenty-two and these budget amounts.
Just another question, we spoke about the surplus. It's, how much is that due to the atypical year and not having? Like a tip, like that being because we didn't have, like, to be in the buildings and staffing, is that?
I mean, historically, we, we've been seeing a downtrend. Last year, we did receive a lot of funding with COVID and we did see a significant decrease on transportation costs and, and, you know, outplacement. So I, I do think going forward, we'll see a downtrend. Last year, we just had a, you know, a...
Two years.
Correct, two years of fluke with COVID. Do I see that two million dollars changing? Yes, can I say it's a deficit or surplus? I can't tell you that once the auditors are done.
This question's related kind of sorta and maybe for Kevin more than Anthony or whoever, but the four hundred thousand dollars for the TA, did we, did we get what we needed out of that?
We hired four so far.
And we budgeted for six?
For six, yes, yeah. And right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern to see exactly what the schools need. So then if, if we don't go to the six, then we won't expend the entire four hundred thousand.
Got it, okay, thanks.
And that four hundred thousand dollars is projecting six from start to the last day of school. So if we do, you know, have to hire someone after winter break, that projection will go down.
Okay. There's also some trade-off in salary and benefits. We don't pay for benefits on contracted workers. So there's, it's not necessarily a four hundred thousand dollar extra spend in the, at the end of the day, because we're paying for them differently, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
It's a contracted service rather than a payroll cost.
Yeah.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
So I think we finished, there's no additional? Or are there any additional comments from the board at this time on the proposed budget? And at this time, we can open it up if, I would like to ask if there's any public comment concerning the proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget. Then at this time, I declare the public hearing on the proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget closed. And Anthony, you're up again. We're going to move along in our agenda and the information and discussion with presentation of monthly financials.
Yeah, so looking at July, comparing July activity, this is versus fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget of tonight. So looking at the revenue, on the revenue side, the district received the bond proceeds July twelfth. So that was a large part of the revenue for the month of July. Also, the district received student fees starting in July. So comparing prior year, we're consistent, looking at prior year. On the expenditure side, it is the beginning of the school year expenditures. And again, looking at all the expenditures comparing this year to last year, we are on the same page with percentages. Any questions?
Thank you.
We'll move along to the presentation of the ISBE Salary Compensation Report.
So in according to school code, um, districts would need to approve um and post um salary compensations for certified staff. Um, so attached is the compensation report for certified staff from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. Any questions? And this is an annual approval process.
Any questions or comments? Okay, um, moving along to the presentation of the IMRF salary compensation report.
Similar to the ISB salary compensation report, um, ISB or, excuse me, ISB in school code requires board districts to approve IMRF individuals who are making seventy-five thousand dollars or more um to prove that, you know, approve the compensation and post it on the website. So this is looking at two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three IMRF individuals who are making seventy-five thousand dollars or more.
Any questions or comments?
I have a, I have a really, I feel like this is a really stupid question, but I'm looking at that document and some of them aren't at seventy-five. Is that with benefits?
Correct.
Oh, got it, okay.
It's total compensation that make up seventy-five thousand dollars or more.
Got it.
I did the same thing. Okay, and now the presentation of salary compensation report for all employees.
Yes, again, this looks at all individuals IMRF and um TRS certified individuals total compensation report. And this is for two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two salary. Any questions?
No further questions? We'll move along.
All right, wait, this is, this is available for the public, right?
Yeah, so the the board would have to review it and then also will be posted on the website.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Okay, move along to GLC metrics.
Okay, um, so we're in the process of uh developing our dashboard for uh the grade levels centers so that we can kind of track the progress as we make this transition. And just uh kind of a reminder of, you know, the why we decided to transition to uh grade level centers, and it's again for the optimal uh system and that's equitable and sustainable. We want to make sure that we're meeting all of our students' social, uh emotional, educational needs, and then that we're able to use our staffing wisely so that we're able to provide the support that our students need. And for optimal this uh systems, um, it's strongly aligning the program of the MTSS that used to be RTI for those of us who have been through um the the process. Dual-language students and our ELL learners as well. Uh, interventional enrichment opportunities for students in the core areas of English, Lingual Arts and Math. And the program includes building configuration for K-five learners, curriculum materials, staffing, professional learning and collaboration, and scheduling. Uh, sustainability is being proactive rather than reactive and that uh we are not relying on the fluctuations in in enrollment. So uh one year, we have to uh shift staff to one building if there's an increase, and we're able to uh to uh make sure that we can accommodate those increases as we see those. Uh, and then in terms of how are we gonna measure our progress, we're looking at our I-Ready, LA in math, our benchmark assessment uh system, Fontes and Prenell, and then uh the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, which is the annual state test that we take every spring, and then engagement of experiential inquiry-based learning, standards-based report card analysis, and the Illinois Five Essentials. And so far, if we look at the uh the annual state test, um, the state hasn't released the twenty-twenty-two um uh scores yet for uh public, and so probably in the next week, we'll get a preview. And then in October, the end of October is when the school report cards becomes public, and then s- uh school district can uh begin sharing that data. Uh, but in two thousand nineteen, you can see for each of the grade levels what the um percent meeting or exceeding was. And then in uh two thousand twenty-one, um, the meets and exceeds, and then our district average uh that we had. And so the the goal is that we want to make sure that we're at least hitting our district average, but then we obviously want to see those scores increasing as a result in being in grade level centers. And then we can also disaggregate that data if we want to, so we can break out our students who have IEPs, our ELL learners, our um low-income students as well. And then in math, the data as well that we've had so far, uh two thousand twenty, the assessment wasn't given. That was the spring, uh COVID-nineteen, March, if we all remember that. And so there was no state assessment, they waived it, and so we have nineteen and twenty-one.
Real quick, Kevin, um, if I'm understanding this correctly, the grade three, twenty-nineteen, uh fifty-six-point-three percent, is that the same students grade five, twenty-twenty-one?
Uh, yes, that would be the same students.
Okay, cool, so it's not, yeah, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I I have another question, but, because these are, these, all these read sort of the same way across. So twenty-two, nine, twenty-nineteen math percentage meet or exceed by grade level. Twenty-twenty-one, same thing.
Mm-hmm.
What is the district average?
So if you average those two years, you know, so
I understand now, thank you.
Right, so then when we get twenty-two, we'll do the, we'll redo the average.
So it's the average across the two
Right.
evaluation periods, we'll call them that.
Right, with COVID throwing in the middle of it.
Yeah, exactly.
So that that's what's making this hard, you know, is because you have uh COVID-nineteen, who, you know, that uh the uh schools went on remote, March of twenty-twenty, and then uh for most of twenty-twenty-one, we were still remote uh before we shifted to hybrid, uh so, yeah.
So are we, it says we're using the average because we don't have the historical trend data yet, and then we'll use trend data?
Um, the, it's, well, the the average is kind of, it helps us write with the historical uh trend data. The other thing too is uh the IAR is relatively new assessment.
Oh, okay.
And so that's, that's the other thing that hinders us. The state has changed the assessment a couple of times, and so it is difficult to get that trend data.
Okay, yeah, I guess I just am not used to seeing average.
So like next year's, would this look like, would this have like the twenty-nineteen column, the twenty-twenty-one column, and then also a twenty-twenty-two column? And then also an average column?
Right.
And then kind of moving forward, it's always like three years and an average? That's what we can kind of expect?
Well, we can, we can probably go out, I would say five years. You know, you're, you're looking at five years. Um, and we'll be able to do that as, as, well, there's talk the state's looking at the assessment again, so we're not sure.
And we only started using I-Ready in twenty-nineteen?
Well, you'll see for all of our students, yeah, twenty-one.
Because we still, we didn't have a lot of I-Ready data pre-COVID, if I recall.
Originally, we were just doing I-I-Ready with certain groups of students, and then we decided to use it as an assessment for all our students. We got away from map testing. For the longest time, we were using map, so we had several years of map data. But then um we felt that I-Ready was a better assessment, and so then we shifted away from map and went to I-Ready, which, so we're, we're starting to develop that trend data.
So Kevin, just to be clear though with this, are we saying that our baseline is the district average? Or are we saying that our baseline is twenty-twenty-one? Like, if we look to what should we expect in twenty-twenty-two, are we expecting better than twenty-twenty-one or better than the average of those two years?
We should definitely see better than twenty-twenty-one, and then our goal is to be better than the average. You know, um, and if we really exceed, our stretch goal would be better than twenty-nineteen.
Right, but to have that happen in a year is probably unrealistic. So I just, just to set our expectations,
Right, right.
the, the minimal expectation is that we are better than twenty-twenty-one
Right.
in twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
And then as the years progress, ideally, we get back to twenty-nineteen and above.
Mm-hmm.
Is that fair?
Right.
Okay.
And where does all this fall in regards to the state also? Or is it, I know it's not po, I know the state doesn't do I-Ready. Sorry, I'm sorry. I know the state doesn't do I-Ready, but for the IAR, the whole state does IAR, so like we're, we're
How do we use that?
Maybe what I'm asking for is to see the state data on here in the future also.
Yeah, we can do that as well, what the state average was for each of the years, we can do that as well.
Isn't that, is that usually printed on the students, like, across the report, it shows the state?
It is included in the school report card, so we can add that data to this, no problem.
I mean, it would just be nice, because you look at something and you see thirty-four percent, but if the state's at twenty-five,
Right.
um, which I recall, the state, we are above the state everything from the most recent ones. But um it just gives another, it just gives another layer of information to understand.
Right. And then if we do look at the I-Ready data, now, we did give um I-Ready all three years. And nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty is again when we decided to use it with all of our students. And so uh you can see that for, and this is kindergarten reading. And so um what you do with I-Ready, all the, all the students take an assessment in the fall. And then um you can determine what their typical growth will be based upon that. And then you uh also have a stretch goal as well. So uh, and then um the percent improved placement, and I-Ready determines if a student, for instance, for kindergarten is um below grade level, if they're early kindergarten, if they're kindergarten, or if they're, you know, first grade, you know? And so then um that, they're given a placement at the beginning of the year, and then the percent improvement are those students who improved upon their their placement. So at the end of the year, in spring of uh, in this case, twenty, how many students moved and improved beyond that? So they may have came in at kindergarten, early kindergarten, but seventy percent were at, you know, kindergarten or um first grade. And so you can kind of see, and this kind of shows you, um, you know, uh, we were in session three-fourths of a year, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And so you can kind of see where the data is at. Uh, twenty-twenty-one, um, again, that was um start remote, shifted to hybrid. Um, and you can see where we're at, and then twenty-one, twenty-two, last year, we're back um full-time. And so uh you can see those percentages um are bouncing back uh now that we've been, and so that's encouraging for the IAR as well. And so then you can take a look at kindergarten math as well. Um, I have to uh, I have to get the data. When I looked at the report, the data wasn't there. Um, Tim said yes, that kindergarten um last year did take the math assessment. So it's just a matter of seeing where that data is at so that we can include that, that data. And then uh for first grade, you can see uh what's uh transpired over the uh um last three years in reading. And then also in math, you can see the trend there uh with the math as well. And then we have our second grade uh students. The, the nice thing about I-Ready, we get data K through five. IAR, it's only third, fourth, and fifth grade that you get data. So the IAR gives us data on all of our students. And then when we look at uh second grade uh math, and then our third grade, and then our third grade in math, and then our fourth grade in reading, and then our fourth grade in math, and then our fifth grade in reading, and then our fifth grade in math. And um we can, again, we can disaggregate this data. We can, you know, look at students' IEPs, ELL. Um, we can take a look at dual-language classes versus the monolingual classes, you know, and the performance as well. So we can disaggregate all the data. Um, and then we can also do cohorts, cohorts as well. So looking at it, you know, our fifth graders, you know, they would have been, they would have taken it their first time in third grade, so you can look at three, four, five, um, and look at the the cohorts that way. Um, we're also working on the Fontes and Prenell reading data. Um, right now, the buildings are uh compiling the data for the last three years and creating their dashboard. We're breaking out again, monolingual, dual-language. Um, and then um what we'll be able to do then is again, the percentage of students who are at grade level, and then also their trajectory where we see them being at the end of a given uh school year. Um, and so then we'll include that data as well. The, currently, they have the, the uh monolingual classes done, the dual-language classes are working on their data. Um, and then we'll be adding that to our data as well.
So I um thank you for this. I feel like the student achievement data, student achievement data, when we're talking about grade level centers, is probably the most important data for sure. Um, and I do think, I appreciate you mentioning disaggregating the data because when we talked about the why, it was about equity in learning, and I think that we have to have that in order to make sure we're actually addressing that. And then I'm just looking at the memo, the board memo, um, and wondering, um, I think this is a great start, but I would, I would personally love to see just some other metrics, like, and and maybe also wondering what the other metrics are for making sure that we are addressing or improving the social and emotional needs programming. And then it says at the bottom, student and stakeholder engagement, like, how are we measuring that?
Um, we're utilizing the Five Essentials survey for that.
Okay, I feel like I've asked this question before and gotten that answer before.
It's like split up from one page to the next.
Right.
The Five Essentials is on there, but it's like
Oh, I just need to keep scrolling.
It's on the No, it's like, there's a page break there, and it makes it look weird.
We're currently pulling the data. The, the tough thing with the Five Essentials, um, fourth and fifth graders take the Five Essentials, so you can get their feedback.
Yeah.
But it's, it's tracking down, when you look at the state um responses, it's tracking down their responses, the student responses. Um, with the high school and the junior high, they're very easy to find the student responses, but in the elementary um one, it's more difficult, and so we're pulling that data out.
Okay. That's it, that, yeah, that answers that question. The, I'm assuming the kindergarten and first graders don't do the
No, no, but we can look at other things with those students.
Something else?
Right, right.
Is that with something with engagement, you were saying, like, um, yeah, engagement and how often they're taking us opportunities? We, I know we, we're gonna get into that a little bit in the next session, but
When is the Five Essentials survey?
Uh, it's given every spring. Um, usually it starts, I think, in February.
They do a big push at parent-teacher conferences always.
I think it's, I think it opens in February, and it's open for a few weeks.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I just wanted to, I, I was a little bit surprised. Um, I was not surprised by like the kindergarten and the first grade numbers, because, yeah. I mean, like the, the like wave of kindergarten and first graders. And also, I remember there being a factor of um apparent factor with a lot of the I-Ready being done at home, um, especially that twenty-twenty year
Right.
um, with the youngest ones that, you know, uh couldn't read yet. Um, so, uh, so I, I remember that. But I was pleasantly surprised to see as the ages especially got younger, as you started to see where kids are, you know, switching from that being read to to learn to reading to learn um on their own, seeing some of our last year's numbers better than the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty numbers. So um, you know, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, we ended the year remote, but we had the majority of the year in person.
Right.
And the exact opposite, um, twenty-one, twenty-two, we had the majority of the year remote and ended the year in person. And to see some of those numbers, especially not just bounce back from nineteen-twenty or twenty-twenty-one, um, which, which was the definite, you know, valley there, not just bounce back, but some of them be even higher than nineteen-twenty, um, was surprising in a, in a super positive way.
Right.
Nineteen-twenty.
Woo, let's never talk about it again. And I look forward to seeing some like dashboard-y type stuff. Um, I, I love going to the Illinois Report Card, the one that ISBE puts together. Um, they have a really nice dashboard system just of like, um, even just to find information about districts, like neighboring districts and um whatever, but it's very, it's very easy to interact with. Um, and I think our, our parents and our stakeholders would appreciate having something that's kind of that easy to understand, you know, and interact with, maybe.
Quick question, so this is a good start to putting together a dashboard. Um, when do you expect us to see another take on this and incorporating maybe last year's Five Essentials?
Right.
Or any of the other elements of the dashboard that you plan on adding?
Typically, the state report card comes out, as I said, it becomes public the end of October. And so then November, usually, I come to the board with kind of like And so then November, usually I come to the board with kind of like our state of the district. And so then I would anticipate, yeah, anticipate updating this and then adding some other elements.
Okay, thanks.
And then is it, once again, too, in the spring with the Five Essentials data? Is that data at the end of the spring, or the next part of the school?
I think this year, it, you know, the, you're relying on the state board to give you back the data. I think this year, right at the end of the school year, beginning of summer.
We had it in, like, June.
Yeah, it became available.
Great.
Thanks, Kevin.
There are no objections, we'll move to the strategic plan update.
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Carey. The presentation that you're going to see is going to relate to some of the data that you just saw. So it's important for us to, as a reminder, the, I'm going to show the three elements of the, of the portrait of a graduate, because that's kind of the basis and the foundation for our strategic plan. So as a, as a reminder, the portrait of the graduate guides our strategic plan. And it's the three pillars focused on the skills necessary to prepare our students for the future. And so operating, operationalizing our data, our strategic plan holds the district and the community accountable, and it, it, it ensures that we're teaching and we're teaching and preparing our students for their future. And it, and this will articulate our strategic plan by showing how it is we're going to measure different elements of it. So hopefully this information will, you'll find useful. So the agenda would be to review those three pillars and then to articulate how the, the portrait graduate is operationalized and measured. So that's, once again, the strategic, the portrait of a graduate serves as the North Star for the strategic plan, and it guides, it guides us in how we help our students be prepared for the future. The first pillar is student agency. Student agency relates to how students influence their own learning, how they take ownership of their own learning, and how the experiences that we, we provide for them are connected to real world and connected to their students' own interests and their own choice and voice in, in their experiences. So when we, we talk about measuring student agency, there are, we are addressing the method in which we are grading the, the students' work and the evidence of how they're meeting their goals. So on it, over and above or outside of the assessments that we give students, like the benchmark assessments, this, the day-to-day work that we're doing, and the evidence of student learning, and, and how we're, we're seeing their growth toward the, the achievement goals and, and the, the learning targets. That's, that's what we mean by evidence-based grading practices. So it's not just the A, B, C, it's the, sort of the progression toward learning. And as students progress toward their learning, they, we actually talk about, and we use language like, what goals do you have? What, what skills do you need to get to grade level? So that evidence-based grading practices, that, you'll see that repeated in each of the three pillars. Also, specific Five Essential questions can be mapped to the individual pillars. So we kind of, we presented, or we worked on a chart as an admin team, and there are specific questions that relate to each one of those student agi, student agency, academics, and higher-order thinking. So you'll see that repeated throughout as well. We measure student agency by things like participation in school and community activities, school programs, students work with the SEL programs that we have. For example, in the elementary, we use the program called Second Step. And there's actually assessments and scores that we can keep to kind of show students' progress toward those particular learning objectives. And in the junior high, the, the work that they do in STAR that addresses social-emotional skills and activities or opportunities at the high school even, like, for example, Take Care Day. And some of these activities are part of our five-year plan. So they may not be part of our children's experience right now, but they're part, they will be evident within our five-year plan. Once again, the measuring student data, student agency data is done through health learning standards. You know, talking about physical fitness and, and lifestyle, and how students develop their, their social, emotional, physical health. And the standards, and the SEL standards, we are actually measuring. We, the elementary report card, for example, actually reports on student behavior and regulating their social-emotional behavior and how they, they manage, manage themselves and how, and responsible decision-making. So those kinds of metrics can be used to measure student data. And once again, our dual-language program is included in all of this. So students across all of our, all of our learning experiences. The next pillar is the academics. And we're really focused on, with our strategic plan, we're really focused on literacy, all elements of literacy. And we want to ensure that our students have access to digital tools to prepare them to, to be computer-literate and technology-literate as they're engaging in their learning experiences. So the measuring, the measuring those academics, and you kind of reviewed some of, sort of those benchmark assessments and, and district-level assessments as well as state assessments. And know that data's useful, but in addition to those kinds of big assessments, we also utilize our curriculum-aligned and common assessments that we use during PLCs and our, you know, curriculum-based assessments. Then, once again, we, because we want our students to engage in higher-order thinking and sort of technical skills and communication, all, all elements of communication, we also want to feature the fact that we provide students opportunities that focus on STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, and even as far down as our kindergarten and first graders with the experiences that they have in the innovation station. That supports our students' communication skills and their literacy around technology as well. I included the equity audit as well, because that is, relates to academics, and that relates to the way students communicate and understand other points of view, developing empathy in the way that students engage in their academics. And the last pillar of our portrait of graduate is focusing on higher-order thinking, which is preparing the stu, our students for the future in a, in a ever-expanding world and to succeed in the, in today's workplace. Young people need more than just basic literacy and math. We have to prepare them with experiences that develop problem-solving and, and critical thinking. So this really is, is something that we're very committed to and evident by the way we're providing experiences for our students, including, once again, we're, we're not measuring rote learning in our core content area. We're measuring, you know, project-based learning. We're measuring how students produce content and not just sort of consume cut media, but how it is that they produce evidence of their learning and how we can see through their thinking and, and that cross over with other, the other elements of how we are assessing. We're also featuring this, the Makerspace and, you know, those kinds of experiences. So hopefully that's provided some sort of overview about how we'd measure, how, what we're expecting to see in terms of our measurement of our portrait of graduate. And so looking forward to your questions.
Nadine, that was really great, thank you. Do you, do we have a, going back to the baseline question, do we have a baseline for most of the areas of metrics that you presented, so that as we get into the strategic plan, we'll be able to, you know, sort of show the progression?
With regard to academics, you know, it's, it's, it relates a lot to, sort of those metrics could be the, the benchmark data and benchmark assessments and the state assessments. The, the strategic plan is a roadmap for us to where we're headed. So, and what our commitments are to provide for our students within the next five years. We, the kind of data that we're talking about in terms of, like, experiences and how students respond to the world around them, it's diff, first of all, there's no real good assessment to, to really test higher-order thinking.
Right.
So we have to do that in sort of those kind of soft ways, like the experiences that we provide for students and the projects that we're, we're engaged in. So in terms of baseline data, like, the number of opportunities that we give our students may not be a measurable element. And, you know, I think one of the big sort of challenges in education is, how is it that we measure things like empathy, higher-order thinking? And, and the claim that we're kind of making is, is that really what we want is, we, we are committed to providing opportunities. So baseline data, for, for example, with regard to student agency, could we measure discipline or referrals? Well, there's a, that does relate to student agency, but there's a lot of other factors.
Right, it's not like a one-to-one correlation.
Right, so the, the strategic plan helps us move to the future and helps us, and gives us a roadmap and what we, what we want, where we want our, want to see our district moving toward, and what we represent, and what we want for our students. But in terms of measuring, like, what it was like before and what it will be like when we finish, a lot of it really relates to whether or not we have completed those action steps in the strategic plan. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's something that we look forward to seeing.
Yeah.
Because it's not, I, I, we've talked about this in our meetings and focus groups, but that's a start, I think, to see the, the engagement. So this is our roadmap, where, you know, we are here, we want to see, like, the engagement, or how many projects are offered this year, and, and that's our baseline. So it's something I would like to see, like, okay, we have our map, we work, you know, this, it's amazing, because I think it's plain language, I think it shows what our goals are. And it's being innovative and figuring out, how do we look at where we are? So, yes, in, in activities with higher-order thinking. We can't necessarily measure that student, but we can look at how many activities we have. And then the following year, we can look at, you know, this is the engagement, like we look at summer school. Like, we don't necessarily have a grade for summer school, but we can look at how well we're doing with engaging students in that. So that's something I would like to see, or these are the number of activities we have. And that may even be a grade for us, maybe the activity wasn't good, and you're not engaging, but.
Well, that's, that's a really good way to look at it. I was thinking in terms of, like, the action plan and all of those steps that we, those actionable steps that we articulated in the action step, like, this is what we want to do, and this is where we are, where we are at so far. That helps articulate our progress, that, and then for, you know, for example, we didn't have an innovation station before, so. We didn't, we didn't make a concerted effort, and we were not intentional about providing our students with STEM experiences. And so our roadmap said, this is what we're going to do, and, and the fact that we have made progress toward that is evident.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so then what, kind of going back to what you were saying, is, is that to continually be intentional in the types of activities and the learning experiences that we're providing for our students, and to sort of hold those up and say, now, where does this fit in? And is this aligned to the strategic plan? And where, where, how will this help our students? That's, you know, and, and we're, we're really proud, you, you know, we're all really proud of some of the great progress that we're making and some of those really wonderful experiences that our students are allowed to, to engage in, so.
Absolutely, and for sure, you know, a lot of it isn't going to be, you know, like, data-wise quantifiable. Where it can be, I think we, you know, we want to try to put that rigor to it. But, you know, I think for the board and for the community to have the structure of, and the vision for what things should look like as we progress the strategic plan, I think is really important. So appreciate all the work that's being done there.
And always going back to where, you know, where are we, how are we progressing and where are we at right now, so.
Because I hear, I hear great things all the time. And even when we talked about STEM activities and the number of students that showed up, and that that's, to me, that's a number. I, I mean, I'm just saying, like, different things as the board moves on and even jumping, and we, we delve into this, that.
We're gon, and in the spring, we're going to do our district-wide STEM night again. That's something new for us, so we're excited. That's another level of, you know, another evidence of engagement. The, the state tests don't measure some of, most of that. They don't, you can't ask a question around a child's thinking, like, child's critical thinking or, you know, problem-solving. So, yes, we have to prepare our students academically, and we have to make sure that they can, there's evidence of literacy and math skills, because that's essential, you can't. But you're not going to see scores on, you know, and that's what, that's a complaint that people in education have been, you know, saying for years, that you can't measure those things. So you have to still, you have to still provide those opportunities, so, thank you.
I have another question, maybe it's for both you and Kevin, with the Five Essentials data. Is there any input from alum or previous graduates, like, it doesn't go that far?
No, it's only current students, current parents, and current staff.
Are they required to take it, the students during class?
They're, they're not ma, you can't mandate anybody take it, but there is a percentage that in order for your data to be counted by the state, you have to have a certain percent of your students complete it.
Okay.
And all of our buildings do a nice job of, in a positive way, encouraging students to take it. So we, we get a pretty high percentage of our students, typically over ninety percent.
So is there, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't want to bombard students with surveys, but since we're saying that our, our portrait of a graduate is, like, unique to us, like, something along the lines of a senior exit survey, just to get their perception of some of these criteria? I don't know if that would be good or bad.
Well, what's really interesting is, is that there are, there are questions on the Five Essentials that are directly mapped to elements of the portrait of the graduate.
Okay.
So there are specific questions that the answers would provide for us insight into students' perceptions of their experiences, so.
And I feel like it does kind of get a little bit at some of the higher-order thinking stuff, like their perception of rigor and, yeah, yeah, right?
Uh, yes, and our student, students provided opportunities for innovation and those types of things. I'm not super well-versed on the questions in particular, but.
I was going to say, is there any way we could see a copy of it? Because I know we know the parent questions.
Yeah, I can, I can get the board copies of the student questions.
Okay.
And then, I mean, do you, do you think it's safe to say, too, though, that if our students are having, like, the rich social-emotional empathy, learning those experi, like, that that would inherently increase their academic achievement?
Well, there's a ton of research that says that before students can achieve academic success, they have to feel safe, they have to be, they, there, there's, their needs, their soc, their emotional needs or needs have to be met. their social, their emotional needs or needs have to be met. We have to address trauma for some of our students. You know, kids come to us with a, with a whole story in terms of what their home life is like and what they've experienced. And so we have to respond to that. There's just a ton of research out there. So we have to always continue to respond to what the student comes with us. And then we are, we're doing direct instruction in terms of managing your behavior and, and making good decisions. And we're, we're doing it in a way where students can reflect on their own experiences and reflect on their own behavior, and we're asking them to do that. So yes, the hard, the work, the hard work that we do to address social-emotional learning or status is worth it because it, because a child cannot learn if, if they don't feel good about themselves. And that's, you know, that's, it just comes right down to, you know, the hierarchy of needs, so.
I just wanted to mention that because I feel like, you know, there is and there isn't data. I mean, this, the achievement data is sort of a reflection of that. So even though there's not a concrete measure for.
That is true.
Social-emotional, if the, if the social-emotional well-being increases, the achievement increases.
And there's, there's also in the five essential survey, students are answering questions about how they feel at school. You know, if they feel safe at school, if they feel welcome. Are, you know, and they, they, there's questions about interactions with other students. And so I think you can drill down into there and pull out some of that.
Great. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for putting this together, the higher-order thinking skills. When I was at my son's open house, a teacher commented on math, how like the creative in various ways that the kids were solving and getting the right answer, so. So it is working for sure, even though it's hard to measure, but it's working.
The, that's interesting that you say that because that's one of the frustrations that we had with, when, when new standards were, were being introduced, you know, seven or eight years ago. The focus of the classroom instruction is solving problems in many different ways. We kind of take it for granted because it's just what we do. And so in terms of the academic score showing the student's ability to solve problems in many different ways and to write and communicate how they solve the problem, it is measured, come to think of it, so. It's a really good example. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
Thank you, Nadine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to student recognition.
So every year, the schools put together the dates that they invite board members to help at their recognition ceremonies. And so that list, where President Adina Hoover has caps it, that are being circulated now. And so board members, if there's an event that you would like to attend, you can just sign up for it. The tradition has been that if a board member has a graduate, either at the high school or junior high level, that they kind of have the first opportunity to be the board representative at graduation and help with the distribution of diplomas. After that, any board member is welcome to, to participate. But once everybody has an opportunity to review the list and sign up for different events, then Shannon will compile that and then share it with the boards so that you have an idea of when those events are and what you, a reminder that this is what you signed up for.
Always that reminder, you know.
All right. So that's circulating around right now. We'll move on to our action items. The first is the adoption of the 2022-2023 budget. Bear with me. The chair will entertain a motion whereas the Board of Education of Community Unit School District Number 201, County of DuPage, State of Illinois, calls to be prepared and tentative form a budget. And the secretary of this board has made the same conveniently available to public inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon. And whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the 27th day of September 2022, notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. Section 1, the fiscal year of this school district be and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023. Section 2, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for the said fiscal year. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. DeCade.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Motion passes. To board action on closed session minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the board action on closed session minutes as presented.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr., Ms. DeCade.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Three, destruction of verbatim closed session minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the destruction of the verbatim closed session minutes from October 2020 through March 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Ms. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. DeCade.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now to the superintendent report.
So my report next week, the week of October 3rd through 8th, is the homecoming week for our high school. And with this being our 50th year celebration, we're encouraging all of our districts to, all of our schools in the district to participate. And so they're all having their spirit week next week as well. The homecoming parade is on Thursday, October 6th. If board members wish to march in the parade, please be in front of Manning by 5:30 p.m. I believe the parade starts at 6 o'clock. Following the parade for high school students, there will be a block party at the high school. Friday night, October 7th, will be the homecoming game at 7 o'clock p.m. And we're, we are inviting all of our alumni to attend the game. And then the homecoming dance for our high school students is Saturday, October 8th.
Exciting. Do you have a question?
Okay.
All right. No other comments. We'll move to board reports.
Anybody? Anybody? It's always me, isn't it?
You too, you too, the troublemakers.
I do a lot of board reports, too. I have a SACID meeting tomorrow, which I'm not going to be able to attend. But, uh, so I haven't had anything happen. Sorry. No SACID updates.
Um, I'm not sure if everyone got the email from IASB about the resolutions report being available. If you guys could glance at it. When you go through the emails, on page 13 is the presentation. It's a very short, it's a shorter list this year than it was last year. So if you guys could glance in it and want to discuss anything before we go to the convention, before I vote on anything, if you guys could just look at that. Gads of other stuff. I know homecoming is next week, but it's a busy week this week, too. We have Biddy Cheer getting together to perform at this Friday's home game. So they'll be practicing the rest of the week, starting tomorrow. Then we also have a dunk tank at this Friday's game to support Manning, so we can start getting sports in the Manning building. So the kids can get into it a lot earlier than later. So go dunk some students and some teachers Friday night. Tomorrow's 80's Day for the second graders at Manning. They're doing their, what? Their special rotations and they're all going to learn about something in the 80's. I did it last year at Manning and it was fun. Brought me back. Brought me back. Other than that, junior high is working on their initiative of the three pillars of community and the kids are getting little Raffle tickets if their teachers see them and all that. So if anybody has any donations to hand out to the junior high, I'm just, you know, pleading out there, connect with Ms. Quettrow. That's what I got.
Do they refer to the 80's as the late 1900's?
No, no, that was about my high school years, the 90's was the late 1900's. Question my pearls.
Okay. We don't have public comment at this time, so we'll move to future meetings and events. So there's a SIP day, early dismissal times for students. If you have questions, please contact your building administrators. But it's September 28, 2022. There's elementary PTO meeting, October 3rd, 6 p.m. at Manning Elementary. Again, the WHS Homecoming Parade, it's October 6th, 6 p.m. downtown Westmont. The homecoming football game is following Friday on the 7th at 7 p.m. at Westmont High School. And then the dance will be on October 8th. There's no school on October 10th, Indigenous People Day. And then our next CUSD 201 board meeting will be October 11th, 6 p.m. here at Village Hall. We do, we'll not have to enter closed session as quickly. So the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the September 27, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Make sure.